Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00 PM October 23rd, 2025, and I'd like to welcome everyone in the room and those participating online as I call to order this meeting of the Bellbrook Sugar Creek Board of Education for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. We value everyone's input and have made sure to dedicate a portion of this meeting to hear from you. In case you missed it, there's a sign-in sheet right up there by the front door for anyone wishing to speak, and we look forward to your comments during that time as it's indicated on our agenda. With that, Mr. Gottem, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Dawn?
Here.
Mr. Kinsey?
Present.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Dr. Prior?
Present.
All right, we have a forum. If you're able, will you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the power of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Gottem, what tonight's treasurer's report, please.
My first recommendation is approval of an agreement with Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council, and this is for electric service agreement.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn and then Mrs. Anderson?
We already have an agreement with Ohio, Southwest Ohio EPC. This adds another year. The rate is about 6.9 cents per kilowatt hour for three-year period.
Am I have any questions? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yeah.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Prior?
Yes.
Five yeses. My second recommendation is approval of monetary donation in amount of $11,666.14 and the inventory of care care assistance for for students.
Elmo. Second.
Led by Dr. Prior, seconded by Mrs. Anderson.
We lost a young student, a former student, a couple of months ago. In his memory, the friends and family made donations, monetary donations to go fund me and Jack's for our golf, golf program, and we raised $11,666.14. We have the family in attendance.
Incredibly gracious. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much.
So sorry for your loss. Absolutely. Thank you. Yes. Please call the roll with gratitude.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Prior?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes, thank you.
Five yeses. Thank you.
Once again, thank you very much for blessing us with this tribute.
My next recommendation is approval of Denain Our Certificate for Resonant Music Design.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Prior and then Mrs. Anderson?
This is in amount of $3,500 for marching band design and music arrangements. We did not have a purchase order when the purchase was made, so it needs board approval.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Prior?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, anything else tonight, sir?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any correspondence for the board, especially anything that maybe all of us haven't seen before? Okay. We will move into reports to the board, and we would very much like to welcome our district representative to the Green County Career Center, Mr. Adam Romali. Thanks so much for being here.
Thanks. It's always good to be here, you know, I enjoy it. Part of it. There we go. Thank you for the opportunity. Just a couple of, some of my big news from the Green County Career Center is Mr. Deskins will be retiring effective at the end of the year, but will be coming back as a retired candidate for another year, and then we're looking at replacements for him. So, you know, that process has begun on October 17th. There was a meeting with 100 different local leaders out of the school where they announced there's been a focus on donations, significant donations. The Charles Shore Foundation out of Cincinnati donated $500,000 to the school, and then two people from Giff Bieber Creek also donated $100,000 apiece. So there's a, you know, with the, you know, Mr. Deskins is part of the group that signs and supports the letter of property tax issue that's currently going on. So looking at those kinds of things, those kinds of donations, I'll watch some of the possible property tax implications. Some of the ideas that are being expanded out is the welding, expanding the welding program out there. The welding program is very successful and continue to get a lot of students' involvement as well as expanding those facilities as well as the culinary department, looking at health department, buildings across near the campus that purchase the land and are going to be in a position to expand the Green County Career Center, you know, that's anticipated. I gave you the details, wins and wears and what's and all of that, but, you know, starting those initial acquisitions to be in a position if the, you know, their growth continues and if the emphasis on trades still continue, that you have the ability to expand, we do have the ability to expand Green County Career Center. So those are the, you know, some of the big items that are currently going on, school year is going on, and those kinds of things, but, you know, just want to make sure you guys are informed of the superintendent, that you, you know, there is a plan in place to make sure that that's a seamless transition and then, you know, looking at, you know, replacing the tax, whether that property tax issue does come to fruition and looking at expansions. With that, I welcome any questions from the board. I don't know how the crowd works, if there's any questions from the crowd, but just as always, thank you for the opportunity and I enjoy serving on Green County Career Center, you know, board on.
Thanks, Adam.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to tell us about some cool stuff going on here in the high school. Thanks for having us this month.
Glad to have you. All right, so every year I get the opportunity to talk to the board and kind of remind everybody and share with everybody some of the great things happening here at VHS. Blind, blind, no one can see us. All right. So, starting off, as you should be sure are well aware, you did receive our board card and we had talked about that last board meeting. So a couple of things to highlight, and once again, we got best points in this school county and one of the top 30 out of more than 100 other schools, other high schools in the state. So of course, we're very proud about that. Having said that, there's always things we want to work on, and one of the new metrics this year that Betsy kind of mentioned, but I'm going to do a little bit more in depth on, is the CCWMR metric, the college and career workplace military readiness metric. And so this has been kind of a long time, used to be called prepared for success back in the day, and it was much simpler, much easier to follow, and we were in great shape. They changed the game a little bit, and so schools like us, we're going to have to make some adjustments to try to maximize our score. So this year, we earned a three-star in this metric, but to earn points in this metric, there are 12 ways to check that box. One of those is to receive an ACT or SAT or VHS pre-score in three areas, English, math, and reading. And have at least an AP in English and 22s in math. So that's where the messenger gets, you know, check that box. They can receive honors upon, they have any combination of three or more AP or IB test scores, then mark age, AP, three or above, enter 12 college credits. Sorry. Have to kind of hold it for a second, but batteries, you might want to talk more. I'm running off the camera mic anyway, so. Earn 12 college credits through CC plus, enlist the military, earn at least 12 AP or AP recognized special points, and a single career field or state recognized license, they can get an apprenticeship, they can do a pre-apprenticeship, they can complete an apprenticeship, or they can achieve efficiency on three or more technical assessments in their career pathway, or they can receive the Ohio means jobs readiness deal plus 30 hours of workplace-based learning. So really, at Belburg High School, we can have an effect on the ACT, the honors upon, AP and IB, 12 credits, can't really mention the military. And then sometimes we can do, we do have engineering provided here, so we can get sometimes we get free, achieve credit center with technical assessments. Here's a problem, none of this, this is all in silos. It's all in silos. Nothing can replace anything else. So the situation we are seeing now and situation we are seeing now, since COVID, many colleges are not requiring ACT, the state requires just the AP. So the pattern we're seeing unfortunately is a lot of students take it one time, the state pays for it, never take it again. So unless they hit all three, English, math, and reading that first time, many times they're not going back to pick up that last one. So they're not competing in that ACT or VHS pre-score. For example, I play from real life, we have students here who have a comp score of 27, but they're not considered college ready because they didn't hit, and maybe it's supposed to say they got a 21 in reading, they got 29 in math, and they got a, you know, I'll say that August, they don't count. They have multiples like that. Maybe they're going to go back and pick up that test one more time, but maybe that 27 is pretty darn good, so maybe they won't. We have talked to, I have talked to Tom Blue today, with representatives and from the U, multiple times, trying to point out that there should be ways to kind of fix these things. For example, I believe that I did not hit math, shall we say, ACT math VHS pre-score. By the way, took CCP and I got As in my math classes in college, that you would think that would replace that. You would think you'd be able to buy AP and college credit, give the 12 or whatever number they want to give. Can't really, although recently they come back and said, well, you can, but you have that happen, you have to have a student come back in college. So guys, next year you come back as freshmen from college, their transcripts have come to Belburg High School and say, hey, it would mean I used an AP test to get college credit. If they don't show them that, you can't count it. There's, there's lots of little weird things like that. Roxy, four years of Roxy, ASVAT test, none of that counts towards the military readiness measure. Only way that counts is if you enlist, and only unless you have to bring back your paperwork and show us that you've enlisted. A lot of weird things. We're still trying to figure them out, we're still trying to find ways to give kids some credentials, but really that's not something that's natural for a home school. That's more of your career centers, things like that. Same with apprenticeships, you can't play those things. That's got to be a career center.
Career centers show up on our report card, or they have their own?
They, they have their own report card, but they also show up on ours. And there's some, we're still trying to figure out, the career centers of the home schools are on two different reports. Theirs, the way they're able to score kids, their points is different from yours. They can get partial points. We're just not really sure how, they're reported, they're reported on ours based on their scoring, what they're having achieved, or what they're doing on ours. They don't have to really hard time getting a clear answer.
Are we getting good data? Like if that can kind of improve with them, it's what we're getting. Like if that can kind of improve with them, is what we're getting, good data from them to report up on?
Well, we don't, we don't have to report it. Their, that data comes over from that, you know, from E M S. We never see it. So that's the other piece is there is no report really to track that single time. For us, it's most.
Technical assessments and apprenticeships, and that all comes through.
We don't get a report of those. Which is good and bad, you know, because we have no way, you don't have a way to take this out of the loop where they have to tell us and we have to telephone it. At least they're reporting it, but we also can't see it. And there is no, you know, real time report going on, where we can see here's where our kids are, other than spreads I'm making, trying, you know, trying to figure out what's going on, who's going to count here and who's going to count there. And again, we don't take the A C T until the junior year. So we get our A C T scores very in the junior year. So that's when we really know where we're at, where our kids are. And it's kind of triage from there. So it's a weird metric. We're all trying to figure it out. The chart over there, you see the little there, that is threes, you know, asking for those. We already have a four for next year, and already it's already been paid, and we're working to, will we get a five? That seems very hard to grasp, just based on what they're asking us to do, realities of regular schools like us, with our students and my.
The districts that do get five, you know, they just lucky and it just happened, or is there some strategy they're doing?
Well, you have some schools, I think, I think there's still a mix. So I mean, hopefully we've got a five, but their average A C T score is twenty eight. So Massinger, where their kids are getting A C T, we're running twenty three. Other schools in the county, some schools have seventy five percent of students in class, a lot of the career. And they're getting credentials through the career center. So if we're patting the parent, kind of apples to oranges, they may have, Greenview over here and us, may get a similar score, but for two very different reasons. You know, we're kind of making our, you know, we're getting our points on the academic side, you know, A C T, honors, and all of that. Other smaller schools have a larger percentage of kids on the career center, doing theirs to the career and technical side. And again, military piece is very frustrating too. It's all military readiness, but really it's military. So again, it's something that obviously you can't control or should be able to control. But basically what it looks like, say, it's kind of four, six, three days, college, career, military, those are capabilities. They're one of the schools that guides students, push students into those three spots. The kids being out may not be checking the box, are good students, are great kids, just your regular old around the middle of high school students getting As and Bs are going to college, most of them. Most of them aren't going, looking back last year, I know most of those kids who did not check the box are in college right now. But because they didn't fit in this metric, one of those silos.
And going to college isn't one of those.
No, it doesn't seem to be the thing, so.
So to get a five, you have to fill how many squares there?
It's like eighty five percent of kids.
Eighty five to a hundred percent of our, so is that based on just senior class, your graduating class that you can share?
Another thing with that too, though, is if we pick up kids right now from, from other schools, they count on our number. So we have kids walking in the door today, let's say, transferring from out of state or somewhere else, they're in our denominator. So it is what it is. But also our graduation, we do a great job of getting our kids through and getting diplomas and things they need, but this is just another metric that's out there. We're all still trying to figure it out. We'll get there, but whether we're going to be able to pull off a five, that's going to be tough.
Do we have any process that follows our graduates after, after we leave here?
There's some survey work and things like that. But it doesn't really help us too.
So the percentages that have achieved three or more of these things, is that what it is, so?
It's not three or more, any one of these.
Just get one of them.
You don't get bonus points for checking, I mean, so our, our kids usually check for one of these easily. But you don't, you do not get bonus points for achieving more than one thing. You count one time. So again.
Mr. Hand's working really hard on this, and he mentioned earlier, we know really late in the game, and so to be able to, to either proactively try to approach it is very challenging because then you're putting extra work and extra burden on kids that will meet at any other, you know, they'll meet it anyways. There's no metric, there's no place in E M S or a state system that tracks any of this until after it's all done. So, you know, we, this is based on the class of 2024. So next year's report card for class of 2025, that's already done.
Yeah, we already have a four.
Yeah, so that, so we're working on 2026. And so trying, trying to figure those things out when they're graduating in the spring. And there's also no, no correlation with graduation seals and graduation rate, which is, I can be a little frustrated, like they can have graduation seals and graduate, we're saying they're ready to go out in the world, but then this whole other metric appears, so.
For example, the Ohio means jobs seal, the definition of that on their website is this seal means you're a student, ready for a career. Great. Then they add on one that'll get you twenty or thirty hours to get this point. The military seal for graduation includes ASVAT, includes Roxy. This does not, this is purely enlistment. So the two different systems don't really talk to each other, they don't match up. But you, you know, in the legislation, the passing laws, everything about really putting it all together, so. It's, again, it's, it's not end of the road one way or the other. Working on it, the one other thing that you don't really see the fruits of your labor is what features that effect. And again, we're trying to find things as far as career credentials, industry credentials, that can be meaningful to kids as well, you know, if we're going to have kids go through these programs, not something just to check the box per se, but something that could benefit from as well. But some of those things we're kind of working on piling now, we're on the street, the states want to take those away. So we may have to be back to drawing board on that, so. So stay tuned on that. Okay, moving on here. I'd like to recognize, we have four students recognized by the National American Board this year, here and there, and here. Are both recognized semi-miles this year. And we have two students, also commended students, Aaron and Cody, and Emma Walton Barker, so very happy examples. Proud of them and obviously representing the school in a great way. It's weird, last year it's all guys. Last year it's all girls. Yeah, it goes in cycles for some reason. A couple other things, we offer seventeen AP courses. Last year we had two hundred two students take over four hundred exams with a ninety five percent passing rate, which was great, highest we've ever had in terms of passing rate. We had eighty students who were also recognized as AP scholars, meaning that they passed at least three AP exams. So that's awesome. We also had over a hundred eighty nine students take C C P courses or college courses while off campus in school and earned fourteen hundred and eighty one college credits. And then once again, they're recognized by U S News at the Report, or maybe for fourteen years. So again, our students and staff are doing great things. And then beyond just the regular academics, we also have a wonderful art program, engineering, there as you see, computer science, not every school around here has a full computer science program like we do, family consumer science, bio program, and also business. We have a lot going on here just beyond the core classes. I was very proud of. We're also kind of coming out of the C C W M R, but it doesn't really help us, but it helps our kids, because we're doing some things to try to help a little bit more current exploration. Softboards that went after the career center, they met actually today with the career center, kind of introduced some opportunities. And we do it in the next month, softboards who wish to travel to the career center and have to check out programs there and the offerings. We're also working with Chad Mason and the Green County E S C, set up a few career camps for kind of by invitation for students, we've got some clever names, Amber Time, which is construction, Scrubs Day, which is kind of meta profession, U of T First Responders Day, and then Peter Tech or I T Day throughout the year. We have eleven seats jingling. So kids who aren't really sure what they're doing, or, you know, aren't sure going to college or in the workforce, these are some opportunities for those students to go out and talk to employers in the area and kind of see what they can do with it sometimes. There's a lot of things out there where you can not have college debt and make a significant amount of money throughout high school. Sometimes the employees pay for you to go back to college if you want to. So there's some great opportunities out there for our students. They're going to have another job fair that came from last year, not by invitation only, and that's not by me, that's kind of by the, the employers don't want everybody down. They only want those students coming down who are really serious about, you know, looking for a job in the area in construction or in trades. So that's something we did last year, and we're going to do again in this one. All right. Band and choir are doing their thing as usual, command performances in the number six tomorrow. The marching band is at Indy in the B O E Super Regional at nine AM. So you have to be real early and drive to Indy. They'll be performing them, they've had a great year. We also had our holiday, or it was October, holiday spectacular a couple weeks ago. That was all part of homecoming week, bands from seventh grade up, playing individually and then together, which is always kind of cool. And we also had our choir concerts as well. So music is working hard. Roger and came in today. Theater, we have our fall play coming up called Deadline, November twentieth, twenty first, and twenty second. Murder, mystery, comedy, usually, you gotta go back and forth between comedies and murder mysteries in the fall. So this kind of combinations, so that'll be coming up soon. Again, success in sports as well. We won the all sports trophy for ninth consecutive year last year, in twenty seven, thirty years. We offer currently twenty seven, Marcy Sports with bowling. And we've already won championships this year in boys and girls golf, girls soccer, boys cross country, and volleyball plays, and the district finals on Saturday, cross country, boys and girls both won the district, they'll be competing in regionals on Saturday. So a lot of good things going on. We celebrate homecoming last week, last week, two weeks ago, all runs together. We had over six hundred and ninety some students, I believe, come to the dance, so very well attended. Comic club game, always entertaining, especially the cheerleaders, that's always interesting. Also, the Hall of Fame induction, we inducted four familiar names, Amy Kelly, Chris Baker, Greg Paul Welch, and some people are Chinese, certainly get the game, but all very well deserving to be recognized. So another great week at VHS, and it's always, it's always fun. Another kind of good news piece, and this is something we hope to come back later in the year, maybe report on, Deborah Sanderson, our counselor, was accepted into the Fulbright Teacher Exchange, which is crazy, which she's tried for years, but this opportunity, again, finally broke through this year, she was accepted, less than, only five, a little less than five percent of the people get selected to apply. Through this Department of State, so hopefully all will together here. But basically, she'll participate in a year-long intensive professional development program, and she will be some online coursework, will be an overseas placement at some point, or she'll work for a country in their education department, and bring back ideas and programs here for us, the kind of few to be global citizens here at Belburg. So she really, I think she was one of five hundred people, maybe, one hundred or four hundred people in the country who were accepted into that this year. So that was pretty amazing. So we're very proud of her, and of course, there'll be opportunities that she hopes to report back on to the board later on as the program progresses. And finally, this is from Mr. Anderson. He's always interested in our, you know, situation. So far, nothing crazy this year. Like at the very end of last year, we had Starlings flying through the ceiling up here, down in the science rooms, we had orphaned baby ducks running around in the parking lots, that's how we ended it. But this one, we've had a kick with this in the office. So this actual story starts back before COVID. Actually, the day before everything shut down, I was at TEDx, teenage TEDx down in Son, kind of like it was. And a girl from, I can't remember where, was talking about pollinator gardens and how bees and butterflies, I don't think we could do that. So we started one kind of in between the two hallways down there. And last year, we started mixing in some milkweed and things like that. And then, you know, earlier year, Mr. Hess wanted to, look what I found, he had like six caterpillars on his head. So he just summed up to, I think it was in Mr. Reinhardt's room, and watched the food interchange. So we started doing the office too, and it became quite, quite a thing. Now, I've always been kind of fascinated by this because I don't know how it works, but like, I mean, it makes no sense. But basically what happens is the caterpillar eats everything it can, which is milkweed as their host plant, which is all they eat, and then you kind of go into a little stupor, we call it jay, oh, that's what we call it. Take the top, a little jay, hook shake, something happens, magic happens somewhere in there, and then they basically tear off their skin, this, no, this is just my cake. It turns into this pupa, pupa, and then crystals. Now I would do it with demonstration, those will be ripping my shirt off, gyrating around, that's what it is, it's crazy, it's like your skin busts off, and that's what's underneath. And then they kind of suck it all in and turns into this. This is very tender. No, but this is what's crazy. But basically, as I understand, in human crystals, they basically break, they break down in food, down to their stem cells almost, and reconstruct themselves from a caterpillar into the butterfly. And after so many days, they just bust out. Over an hour, they're flying away. Now their life cycle is shortening, two to five weeks usually. So you do all this stuff, and two to five weeks later, they lay their eggs and die. Now, another thing I did learn this year was, and I kind of do it, but this part's fascinating, monarchs migrate. They migrate great distances, they don't migrate to California, they migrate to Mexico. And if you, your life cycle's two to five weeks, you're probably not going to get to Mexico. So this is what's crazy, this last generation, so the ones that were hatched here at the end, they know to kind of freeze their development, that they don't develop sexually, they don't, you know, go ape, and they will live up to nine months. Everyone else is two to five weeks, these guys will live six to nine months because they kind of freeze their development enough to get back to Mexico and start something all over again. That's crazy. So now you know. There's your annual update.
This is the administrators doing this, this is the biology department, this is what happens.
It was, it was, we've already planned, we're going to expand this next year. Everything to think, we're going to expand it, we're going to take one of those trophy cases, and we're just going to go crazy with it.
Somehow it's going to turn into an internship or something.
We're going to count, we're going to count something towards industrial credentials.
The pre-internship and whatever.
Yeah, but it's really cool, so, and it's, it's interesting, so. At least the office, we thought it was really cool, so that's, that's all that matters. All right, so last couple things, again, kind of promote our social media, both the district and high school, we crack ourselves up and try to get some things out there sometimes. So our kids are doing a lot of great things, our staff are doing a lot of great things. This is one more way to get it out there for our whiz. And so if you're listening online, and if you aren't following us, please do, we try to keep things up to date. That kind of wraps it up. Any questions or comments?
Well, thank you so much for your hard work. I have two high fours right now, and they go flocking, so doing a great job.
Appreciate that. Got a lot of great kids, a lot of great teachers, and a lot of great friends in Silver Rock.
Appreciate all your hard work and staff.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, up next, we would like to welcome our Director of Special Education, Mrs. Pritchard. We appreciate you being here.
Thanks for having me. I should have went before today, but I don't know how I'm going to follow the life cycle of the better.
We don't have any life cycles to talk about.
Can you relate it to special education students from the block now?
Yes. Definitely.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm just here to give you an update on our special education model policies and procedures. If you all remember, these are relatively new, they just started back in March of 2025. So I'm still So I'm still learning and I hope that you all can learn with me. Let's see if I can do two things. All right, so the model policies and procedures are a part of our district's ongoing compliance work with the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. It's going to ensure local policies remain aligned with both IDEA and the Ohio operating standards for students with disabilities. Ohio law mandates that every educational agency must have written policies and procedures for the education of students with disabilities. These policies must align with both federal and, sorry, federal law and the Ohio operating standards. So districts have two options when we choose to adopt these policies. So option one is that we can take the model policies and procedures just as they were written and given to us from the Office for Exceptional Children. Option number two would be to develop the district specific policies that meet all state and federal requirements while customizing for local practices. So we would blend what where our current practices are with what the state has handed down. The other approach must still demonstrate full IDEA and operating standard compliance. So that means we could not give any less than what the state has already mandated. If that makes sense. And you all feel free to stop me if you have questions. So all policies and documentation verifying the board's approval must be submitted to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce through their monitoring system. And the annual verification step ensures continued compliance and transparency with the Ohio Department of Education as well as the Office for Exceptional Children. So if you all choose to adopt the policies, all that means is I'm responsible for uploading it. It'll do to make sure that it is completely transparent and it follows all the guidelines. So what needs to happen this year is our special education team, that is comprised of myself and our school psychologists, have already reviewed the 2024 model policies. And we are not currently making any changes as we were just handed those back in March. So we're going to go ahead and adopt, if you all choose to, as written. Where we are now is, I'm kind of moving because of the PowerPoint, sorry. Our review process began in September. So what we're doing now is we're going to break down the special ed model policies and procedures step by step and section by section. So doing this, we'll be able to carefully analyze for the compliance of IDEA, the alignment with Bel Brook Sugar Creek policies, and clarity for staff implementation. So at this time, like I just said, no changes or amendments have been made to the current policies. We will be accepting those as written from the state. That was fast. So in summary, I'm recommending that the Board of Education for Bel Brook Sugar Creek consider adopting the state's special ed model policies and procedures as presented. These are the most up-to-date policies provided to us by ODU and the Office for Exceptional Children. And formal board approval will allow us to remain in full compliance. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you so much.
While you're up there though, this is not a question, but I was going to send you an email on Mr. Hand, but since you were both on the agenda tonight, I figured I would use this platform to share some of your, so just as a parent, I was going to send you a thank you email. But Mr. Brown, who is one of the intervention specialists here at the high school, and a couple of your care professionals took it upon themselves to take a group of special education students to homecoming. These are kids that don't always get remembered or included in other groups of kids that are making dinner plans and headed out. He made the dinner plans. He took a group of eight or ten students to homecoming and they got to have that experience like their peers. As a parent, I would say thank you. I tell him thank you, but to me, some things deserve to be said in public. To your staff, please know that. They went, they went to dinner, they got to like go to dinner and have that experience without their parents, you know, and have a very handsome night and go to the dance just like everybody else as a group because they kind of just needed someone to get a group together to have a go, so. Not a wonderful.
All kind of agree with you, Mr. Brown.
I'm, I'm sure it is, and the, and some of the care professionals who work with them as well. But sometimes it's good because it tells your bosses that you did good things, so you did good things.
We will make sure that we realize that he is always doing little things for that. He needs to be recognized, but.
Well, we'll make sure that he gets, sorry, not that.
Well, thank you all for coming in.
All right. Here's the first one. We're appreciating best your stuff all around. And we'll now move into our core, many reports. On the first legislative liaison, I got just a few things you might be interested in. First one is that the Ohio School Bus Safety Grant is open for applications. Governor DeWine announced the $10 million available for repair, replacement, or buying some new school buses. You're adding safety to school buses.
Dr. Cozette earlier today, I hear we're applying for that, so. Oh, yeah. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next, House Bill 57 was signed into law. This one had kind of two big things in it. The first one was a little bit of a tweaking to the religious release time law that came out a year ago, whatever it was. There's no impact to us, as I understand it, for the policy that we already passed several months ago, but just so you're aware of it. And then the second big thing in House Bill 57 is talking about overdose reversal medication, Narcan, things like that. Some stipulations about how much, the amount of the drug supply in each school, having it stored in a secure location, description of any training, things like that. House Bill 57.
Oh, both of those were in that?
Both of those, yeah. There was kind of, those are the two heavy hitters. Sometimes things, I think, get jammed into legislation at the last minute that sometimes are not like the other. Yeah. Sure. A couple of financial things. I know everybody's always talking about and looking at property tax situation as it's got worse and worse and worse over the years. House Bill 183 just this week passed the Ohio House. So what that is, is it really affects schools that are on the 20 mil floor, which we are not. We are the only school in Green County that is not on the 20 mil floor. So this one really won't affect us while we're in this situation. But it will limit outside millage increases to basically match inflation. Whereas before, if you are on the floor, your property taxes can go up and up and up based on your assessments and whatnot. That doesn't apply to us. That doesn't happen to us now, so this really isn't impacted. But it would make that outside millage match inflation and not go above that kind of set cap. Similarly, House Bill 335, this one would apply to us, would apply to everybody, is that same concept, tying any increase to inflation and no more, but it's for inside millage. And last one I thought I'd mention, I, I always say these things like, I usually only want to mention things that are like further along or just got passed or whatever. This is brand new, so who knows if it'll go anywhere, but I think it's something that we all definitely need to keep an eye on. Senate Bill 93, it's just kind of a concept bill. There's not a lot of meat on the bones because I, I went and looked because I'll have a couple of questions. But as it was introduced, it's just kind of a concept, is to replace all local school property tax levies, like all of them, with a statewide property tax and then also an additional 1.75% on a state sales tax. So that's a couple legislators, legislators' idea about how to try to tackle the property tax thing. My first question that I had when I read that, again, I couldn't find anything, so who, who knows how it'll end up? If it even gets passed or whenever details start to come out as they work through the logistics of it. But, I mean, we always talk about how the state does not fund our district properly. We only receive about 23% of our funding from the state. And that's the reason why the vast majority needs made up by property taxes. So we talk about, okay, state needs to fix that. They do. One thing I want to keep an eye on, and I'll be talking to legislators about those, that, well, okay, it's great for you to collect more money at the state, but are you actually going to distribute it fairly? Because that's not what they've done. They have quite a bit of money, but they send a whole bunch of that money to districts other than ours. Some districts receive way more per pupil or the vast majority of their operating budget from the state, and we only get pennies. So that's something we need to keep an eye on, just because if they want to collect more money, that's great. But are you actually going to fairly and equally and evenly give that money back out to everybody?
Well, not only will they be collecting it, but they will be telling us that we can no longer locally collect it. So if we're going to. We've got a lot of trust about sending all of our money to all of them.
Them deciding how much we get.
That we're going to get much of it back.
And that would only affect property taxes, not, does it address like income, would it wipe that out?
So it's only for local school property tax levies. You know, property tax levies still fund fire.
Right, right.
Other things. And again, this is very, very early. It was just introduced this week. Maybe it won't go anywhere. I mean, the good news is at least they're talking about it. They, they see the cliff that they're rushing towards. The good news is at least they're come up with some ideas, but.
Does it seem to be a, I guess, a, some pre-planning in case if all property taxes get, you know, basically turned over by the people a year from this November? Is that, is that what this is about? It's like, just in case that actually happens, that they're going to?
They wouldn't be able, if all property taxes get forbidden by constitutional amendment, they wouldn't be able to collect the state property tax either, I would think.
Yeah.
They could do the sales tax portion, but.
Yeah, it just seems odd to me, honestly, what they're, what they're trying to do with that one. It's either too late or it still doesn't fit, you know?
They're trying to create money out of it. No, like there's a, there's a tax burden, okay, but there's also a need for money. So you can't create money out of it in there. It's just, we're going to take it out of different pockets. What pocket should we take it out of instead?
In that, you give total control up to the state of what your local money is. So they, they would control how much money we get and therefore what programs we can offer or not offer and so forth, so. Giving up a lot of control to the state in a local control kind of state, that would give up a lot of control to the state. And again, to piggyback on the, the property tax and that conversation, this week, Green County superintendent's sent out a letter through Parents Square to Parents and then social media, just that burden has shifted. It was mentioned last week, that burden has shifted from, over the years, to more to the local property tax owners, individual tax owners. And that shift is on and that shift has gone away from businesses and it's really gone on local property tax. And so to me, the legislature has created this whole dynamic and then are screaming that this doesn't work. But they've created the whole dynamic and the shift is on to the local taxpayers. So that actually is also coming out in the bridge in the next, hopefully, two or three weeks, that letter. So that will go out to the whole community also. And so, you know, we would love great solutions and, and things that, you know, help the people that need help out there that maybe aren't as able to, to pay for things and so, but we can't have a just fall off the cliff kind of thing. No property taxes and no plan to, to do that, so.
How about next, we hear from Mrs. Anderson about the OSBA conference. It's coming up soon.
Mm-hmm. Capitol Conference is November 16th and 18th and through the 18th in Columbus. Student Achievement Fair Deadline has been extended to October 28th. I haven't heard from anybody, so, but if anybody still wants to get in, we can still do a nomination. And then the delegate meeting, I will be representing the board at the delegate meeting, which is Monday at 2:30 of that conference. There is new platform information that has been publicly shared, so I encourage you to go look it up. I don't, I can't send it to you via email, but you can look that up. And if you have feedback or anything like that, you can feel free to let me know, so. Questions?
All right, thank you. Dr. Pryor, anything from BSE?
Yes, so the Bel Brook Sugar Creek Education Foundation sponsored the Hall of Fame induction on October 10th, where Chris Baker, Perry Caldwell, Cam Kelly, and Janice Sigman were inducted to the Bel Brook Hall of Fame for their outstanding contributions to our school and community. That was a fun morning. We also had a Back to School with Class t-shirt fundraiser in the fall that raised $1,100. And right now, we were collecting teacher grants. So teachers that want a little something extra for their class, apply for grants from the Bel Brook Sugar Creek Edification Foundation. We have 10 applications right now. We're going to be evaluating those on, at our November 12th meeting. We also have the Color Run, a 5K, where you get, wear white and get colors thrown at you. Schedules for Saturday, June 13th in the morning. And we love new members, so if anyone wants to join the Bel Brook Sugar Creek Education Foundation, contact me or Beth Eckley, and we'll get you involved. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Price, Financial Advisory Committee and the Safety Committee.
Yeah, neither of which have met in this current school year. I know the.
Safety Committee.
Is, I think, the fifth of November.
Fourth of November, somewhere in the range. I remember first week of November and safety, sorry, the financial, yeah, I got the backwards. Safety Committee's meeting the first week of November and the Financial Advisory Committee's still, dates are still being worked on, so. Not really anything to say.
Well, I know you just recently sent a thank you to Mr. Eckley, safety improvements, even though the committee hasn't met. Safety improvements are continual, which is amazing.
Well, yeah, without going into detail of what those are, there have been significant improvements made since last year in our school safety, I guess, architecture. And, and, and Mr. Eckley's done a lot of great work in working with contractors to facilitate that. And, and that's a product of, you know, of, of the Safety Committee where we come together and talk about things, talk about vulnerabilities, things we can do smarter, and it's something I really have a passion for. And I appreciate it greatly. It works as well. We have, you know, a good partnership with the Bel Brook City. We see some improvements down there that have been made, like with the crosswalks and whatnot. So there's a lot of good things that come out and it's.
If you look back, you know, over the years.
Green County.
Helped us with the lights that are over there on feed wire, you know, for the crosswalk that's there.
So we're fairly productive, little committee, subcommittee, which I really enjoy working on, working with, so the people, so.
See, you tried to get out of it, being all humble, but I had to call you out. We really appreciate your work on that committee. Everybody really cares about having safe buildings, so thanks for your work on that. And then last on our list, we don't really have anything to report. Mrs. Dorn and I represent the board on the Active Shooter Response Team Implementation Committee. It's all going exceptionally well. All right, anybody got anything else may have missed on that? All right, so we'll now move into our open communication period. Your thoughts and comments are welcome during this time. There's a sign in sheet right up there by the door in case you missed it. When you're given the floor, please share your name, address, and any group affiliation you hold, if it's relevant. You'll then have five minutes for your comments, which should be directed toward the presiding officer, who tonight happens to be me. As time is for the board to listen and absorb, and as such, traditionally, a dialogue is not created in this moment. In case you're wondering the reason for these policies, which can be read in their entirety on the district's website, Policy Number 169 dot 91, is to ensure that as many people as possible have the opportunity to speak and that everyone is treated equally and fairly. So with that, we would like to welcome up Greta Schumacher. Thanks for being here.
You have five minutes. All right, thanks for having me. Hi, everyone. Good to see everyone again. I'm Greta Schumacher, I live in Dunedin, I live in Bel Brook, and I'm a parent of two kids, one at high school, one at middle school. And today, I would like to speak on open communication, which was a topic earlier. And about, I guess, the second board meeting of the year, I felt pretty good. And I felt like we maybe have moved on to a nice communication phase. But now I'm still hearing from the community and also wondering myself, where do we stand on the current rights and the book? We had some ideas about, you know, maybe share syllabus, could we change the off end, go on out again? And I haven't heard anything correctly. If I'm wrong, I would love to. If I'm wrong, I would love to see, like, a list of books that were moved from the middle school to the high school, and this of the books that were not meeting the standard with this new policy. I would just love to have a more open communication about this. And I don't know how this works. I'm kind of new this year to the whole board meeting. So I would just love to see something, you know, on Parents Square, or explain something on the website, in the X newsletters, something where parents can go to and see which groups were affected, and just see, like, how far along we are in the communication. What's the new plan for next year? Will we still have to opt-in? Or can we opt-out? Just like now, in sixth grade, they had the Aaron's Law, and they learned about this. And as a parent, you had to either, you had to opt-out if you wanted your kid to not hear this. So I think that works perfectly well, and it sounded like for the teachers and everyone, it's better to have the opt-out issue that we discussed earlier. And I just wanted this, as a parent, and to all of you, just explain that sometimes, as I said earlier, books can teach us things we cannot, we don't encounter. And oftentimes, we don't maybe want to encounter this, and therefore, we can learn from it. And maybe it's, if you yourself, as a parent, are like, oh my gosh, I want anyone to read this or hear about it, maybe think back. For example, I went to look at the books at BMS for the curriculum night, and there is books that I think is good to read, like the Berlin Blue Coat, for example. And that one is about Nazi Germany. And it's often about, you know, portraying, like, how Germans are bad, it's not terrible. And it's a very dark part of my country's history. And oftentimes, my kids started reading about this in third grade and fourth grade, Number the Stars, and Frank, all of this gets repeated, and they learn about it, and it's good that they learn about it. Oftentimes, for example, let me tell you a story. I went to an airshow, and they have a presentation, let's say, about jets flying and planes coming in. My two-year-old sounded, whoa, cool, you know, so. And my five-year-old daughter was, no, look at that. And then they heard the announcement, and it was all about, oh, the Americans are fighting the Germans. We're gonna defeat Germany. And of course, I had to explain to my five and my two-year-old, who were like, but Mom, I'm half-German. Why is that? So I had to explain to them already the history of the country, and what happened, and how important it is to never forget, so we don't ever see this again. And I didn't want to have the conversation with my five-year-old. I also didn't want to have the conversation with my four-year-old, when I was standing in front of a garrison, and explain all of that. But sometimes, you have to explain and keep an open communication with the children to make sure they learn, and to make sure they, you teach them in a kid language what's happened. And oftentimes, I could include also people who love differently than you think is what's right. People who look differently. If they don't see these people around them, maybe give them the opportunity to read about it in the book. So that later on, when they leave the nest, it's been heard, a lot of people are going to college, going to different places. They are not confronted and taken aback by what's going on in the world, but actually know about this early on. And therefore, I would love to see more communication and reconsider the opt-in versus not. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And up next, we'd like to welcome Mike Frigman. Thank you for being here. You have five minutes.
Yeah, hello, word. My name's Mike Frigman, from Rob Bellbrook residence, as always. Wanted to get up and just mention a few things. Over the course of the last couple of months, I had just a handful or so of parents or other Bellbrook residents reach out to me and ask if I might want to run the Bellbrook School Board in the upcoming election. I don't know why they singled me out, but I've never expressed any intent or willingness or desire to do so.
They're afraid of fire.
And I guess, I guess, something I've said touched something in me. But, you know, I didn't, I don't feel I have the time to dedicate to it. I appreciate all the time that all of you dedicate to it. I know it's a, can be a heavy lift at times. But I did see that the three current board members are running unopposed. I would like, and I haven't done my research, so I may be speaking out of my rear end, but I did get a letter in the mail from the Green County Republicans saying, here are the people that we endorse, and it was the three people that are currently running. You know, as a nonpartisan position, that maybe felt a little bit uncomfortable to me, but maybe, and I'm not sure, a few folks have already done this, but a couple of school board meetings ago, I asked, especially with current involvement, parent choice, of how do you, what is the vision? What do you want to see for the school district? What do you want to see for the school board? You know, how, what is the desired end state, and how do we get there? I hope that maybe you've at least thought about that vision. I don't know if you've expressed that formally. Maybe you wish at least one other additional person would have run, just so we could see in the newspaper, you know, when they ask questions, when they see your responses, just to see what that vision might be. I'm not sure if you've published that on a, anywhere public, you know, Facebook page. I only get on there about once a month, so it could be there. Again, I may be not be fully informed, but something like that would be very beneficial for our community to understand kind of where you feel on certain policies. I know, again, that Republican endorsement may be a little bit difficult to me. I know the Republicans at the State House, I know, you know, whatever percent of Ohio was Republican, the large majority, but, you know, things aren't going well. I might suggest we try something different, but, and I know everybody's all been on that side of it. So anyway, that might be my recommendation to you folks that are currently running. If we could just understand what your vision may be. I know it's essentially a shoo-in at this point, but I think that would be beneficial to the community, to the parents and other citizens of Bellbrook and Shuakon. Sent only the superintendent's letter. Of course, I read that as well, you know, it's a lot of difficult decisions are invading Columbus, and I think in almost all regards, it's putting schools at a disadvantage that is big concern to myself and other parents. I wasn't gonna go off on another tangent, but I'll let that be. I saw there were a lot of policies changed. I saw, I think there's a first reading, I didn't get to read, I saw about, I mean, 40 policies that are getting to reading today. I think I did see one about the rental consent and changing it to opt-out instead of opt-in. So I think that was a recommendation, I hope that's followed through. Again, I didn't get to read all of them, but, so having said all that, though, I do want to, again, kind of, I don't think that'll negate anything I just said, but, you know, we just appreciate seeing the school board's visions and intent for the school district. But I did want to end on a good note, as I sometimes or usually try to do. A lot of the things that I did, got up here and talked about, my son is involved in those at the high school, you know, AP Scholar and everything else, he's doing great there. He was, I pulled him out of school to go to attend a math contest, the state of Ohio. He placed in the top 100 kids in the state of Ohio for high school students. So now he's going over to Columbus for this math competition in two weeks, competing against the best high school students across the state of Travis, Ohio. I think he'll probably do pretty well there. So my kids are thriving, and it's always, it's always the challenge of, at the micro level, the kids are doing great, they're happy, they come home successful. They're happy to go to school the next day. But at the macro level, a lot of things are, seem quite concerning, the medium and long-term health and growth of the district. Thanks. Well, last thing, I did have two teachers, parent-teacher conferences. One teacher just skipped the 15 minutes, and she ended up spending an hour with me to go over some situations with my child. So again, dedicated teacher, dedicated administrators, school board, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate your presence. All right, I'm to the end of my list, so we will close open communication period for tonight, which moves us into the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. So 7E is the consent agenda for 7A, B, and C, and D. So A is certificated license employment, resignation, leave of absence, and supplement of duty and public activity. B is central office employment, resignation, leave of absence. And then C is support staff employment, resignation, leave of absence. And D is substitute employment. So consent agenda for A, B, C, D, and E, or, I'm sorry, A, B, C, D, and E is the approval of the consent agenda.
Second?
Moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Mrs. Anderson.
Again, as it should be at this point in the year, fairly light on the hiring and so forth. But I do want to recognize Ray Watts, he's our new maintenance supervisor. Tom Fryman is retiring at the end of the calendar year. He's been here 20-plus years in that position, and so good luck to him, as he's off into retirement, and congratulations to Ray Watts, who's our current maintenance assistant in the district. So he was promoted to this position. He's been in the district for 10, 12 years. So he knows our buildings, and knows our folks, and knows staff, so he's gonna do a fantastic job for the school district.
All right, tonight's consent agenda was moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Five yeses?
Right, out-of-state travel marching band. Recommend approval of out-of-state travel for the high school marching band in Indianapolis, Indiana, October 24, 2025, to participate in bands of America's super-regional competition.
So moved. We gotta hurry, because they're leaving at 4:30 in the morning.
Dr. Pryor, and then Mrs. Dorn.
Yeah, this obviously was missed. They are actually, there was, yeah, so this was actually missed. And actually, just a, I'll just have a side note, kudos to our transportation department. As they were getting the semi ready today, a final check, they found a tire was, had a couple nails in it, so they had to replace the tire, and then as they were doing that, something else broke. They had to do an emergency procedure on the tire, and so they spent extra time trying to get that. So just another example of them going above and beyond. They did not second-guess, they're like, we need to get our kids to Indianapolis in the morning safely, and just going above and beyond. So kudos to our transportation department and our mechanics in getting that done and accomplished. Good luck to them tomorrow, as they participate in leaving really early and coming back really late. It's gonna be a big day for them, so.
All right, please call the roll.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Five yeses?
All right, next, letter B here. Thank you for sticking around, Mr. Romali. "I am making a motion to recommend approval of a resolution to continue the appointment of Adam Romali as Bellbrook Sugar Creek Local Schools Representative to the GCCC Joint Vocational School, District Board of Education, for a three-year term of office, to commence on January 1st, 2026, and expire on December 31st, 2028." Does my motion have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Pryor. Really appreciate what you do. You always keep us well informed, though.
It is my privilege, and I'm very honored to serve, and thank you for the opportunity. Please, if you have this big task question, if there's anything you ever need, please. But thank you for the opportunity. The entire board, thank you, I'm very, it's a very important.
No, thank you. No, thank you. No, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Five yeses?
Thank you again, seriously. Means a lot.
Right, revised job description, recommend approval of revisions to job description for maintenance supervisor.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn, then Mrs. Anderson.
Again, this was a first read from last time, just some minor changes as we're doing a switch over here to maintenance, new maintenance supervisor. Thought it was time to look at and make sure that it accurately reflects the position. Again, just some minor tweaks from last time, from the last job description.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Five yeses?
All right, D, recommend approval authorizing the superintendent, treasurer, and board vice president to enter negotiations with the Green County Educational Service Center for the sale of the Shura Creek Elementary property.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn, then I heard Dr. Pryor.
Again, so if you remember, back in April, May, there was a similar resolution for authorizing myself, Mr. Goddard, and Mrs. Dorn to enter negotiations with the city for this property. So again, this essentially gives us the ability to do what we need to do with either and/or the city and/or the ESC to move forward on doing something with that property. So just because, so just gives us the flexibility to be able to do anything that we need to do with the ESC or the city with that property down there.
Does it permit us to sell anything to the ESC?
No, it does not.
Just allow top numbers, really?
Right, and so if we at some point want to move forward with that, there would be another resolution for the board to authorize the sale of the property to whomever. That would be, so that would be another resolution. This is just to enter, authorize us to enter negotiations with everybody, with the city and ESC.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
I abstain.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Four yeses, one abstain.
So as at least one of our speakers mentioned tonight, there are a lot of policies on the agenda for first read tonight. It's not as overwhelming as it seems. There's actually not a ton here, that's super substantive. But if you all want to be ready to write, there's a few things I want to make sure you're aware of, because it's hard to track when you're looking at these kind of changes. So you see a lot of what are normally contentious policies on here, and I don't think there's any super big contentious changes here, but what NEOLAs, who is the agency that helps us direct policies to make sure that they're in line with state law? They're all, they're changing some of their templates, and so a number of these policies that look like they're being rescinded, like, you just looked at this, it looks like we're rescinding our entire anti-darast policy. We are not. But policies 1662, this is where I'm probably, probably want to write these down, so that we can review these later, and it'll make sense to you. 1662, 1422.02, and 1422 are all being combined into 1422. So those are anti-darast and discrimination policies there. It looks like one is being changed a ton, and one and two are being rescinded. They're really being combined into one. The changes that are being made are probably, like, super substantive for some other school districts. They're not so much for us, because we had already made a number of those Title IX changes to our policy. So some of the wording looks different, but the substance, I think, is pretty similar when you look at what was in those three policies that is now a one policy. So that was 1422, 1422.02, and 1662. So that's in the 1,000 series, which is called Administration. So that is where we need mostly student-centric policies. That's mirrored in the 3,000 series, which is for professional staff, same kind of thing. So 3122 is now going to combine, comprise what was 3122, 3122.02, and 3362. Those are going to be combined. And then in the 4,000 series, which applies to our support staff, 4122, 4122.02, and 4362 are being combined. So that's nine of them right there, the changes, but really, there's not a set of substantive changes. A number of the other ones, you'll see just changes that are in addresses. The Cleveland Office of Civil Rights. I don't know if it's been completely shut down, or if it's just no longer where we are to spend any civil rights type complaints. And out of our district, call up the complaints, if there was any. And out of our district, call up the complaints if there was any civil rights type complaint. It would go directly to the office of PC now. So that address appears in a number of policies, so that address has been updated. Our favorite is policy fifty-seven eighty, and this answers part of your question, Ms. Schumacher. We are proposing some minor adjustments after talking to community members, but also conversations with teachers and administrators. Mostly, I don't want to say opt-in or opt-out, but making a pathway for books or materials that are used in the classroom that are part of curriculum. If we do have non-responsive parents, that there is a procedure that if a, if a teacher or staff member makes a good faith effort to reach out to parents over multiple occasions and never hears back, that, that student can be included in that education. There's a couple other minor things that Dr. Cozett has requested. So you can take a look there. The overall theme of the policy has changed a ton, but some minor tweaks there. I'm not going through all of them. This is just kind of the ones that might need some rationale. Policy sixteen thirteen, which is titled student supervision and welfare. There's some, a lot of language about the word grooming that's in that policy. It might appear in a couple others. That came, comes out of state law, but the definition and the term grooming was put into state law during the two thousand twenty-four lame duck session. So that's not like we decided that grooming's a big problem here locally. That's capturing that word that has actually been put into state law, and so we're making our policy near state law. Let's see. This name for policy thirty-one thirty, there is a new state law, and it addresses moving staff members from building to building. And it says that since, that should not be done based on seniority. It shouldn't be whoever is the lowest on the totem pole gets moved. That cannot be the primary factor in the decision. It should be based on the, the needs of the students and the needs of the district. So that's out of state law too. So that's just us capturing that in our policies. So if you have any questions as you're reading through these, feel free to reach out. But yeah, it is a big packet, but not a ton here that I think is super controversial there. Nothing confusing other than all of those policies being combined.
I can also have fifty-one thirty-six, the personal communication devices, that K-8 was no cell phones, that was moving to K-12 in the second semester. So even though this policy will be implemented, you know, hopefully at the next meeting, it's not going to go into, that particular one's not going to go in effect until second semester for the, for nine to twelve. It's already, it's already in effect at K-12.
High schoolers know that's coming. The national heartbeat starts, that's the national beat. We didn't do it.
Wasn't us.
Call them to sit.
Wasn't Mr. Hand either, so.
I think that's it. Her policies, again, ask, throw any questions my way, sometimes doesn't matter.
All right, so that's just a first read. Now we'll get to dig in and potentially vote at the next meeting. Thank you.
Before we go on, I want to, I didn't see Mr. Watts back there. He was hiding, our new maintenance supervisor. So I want to introduce Mr. Wattsbacker Ray. So congratulations and welcome. I apologize, I didn't see you. You're like in my, like, right behind this gentleman right there. No, so, again, Ray's going to do a fantastic job, has already done a fantastic job in his current position and is already moving forward on some things, so we're really happy to, to have him as our new supervisor. And so again, he's going to do a nice job, and, and congrats, and thanks for coming tonight. Apologize for, for not seeing you earlier, but I wanted to recognize you. Yep. So joint meeting is on November seventeenth, so this is our second one for the year with the city, township, park, district, and the schools. So this is going to be at the City of Bel Brook Building on November seventeenth at five P.M. And so as we're preparing that, that agenda, we have to say what we're, at least on our part, what we want to discuss or what we would like to discuss, and so is there topics for discussion for that meeting? Again, so we'd have this meeting and the next meeting, so it doesn't have to be tonight. We can, we can put it again on for the November meeting also, but if there's topics right now.
So you're asking for inputs now?
Yeah, for topics to, that would, that we would like to discuss.
I mean, unless we want to think about it and decide at the next one.
We can do both.
Yes, we can do both, right? One that comes immediately to mind for me is the SRO situation, both with the city as well as with the township. As we heard, as I understood from the last meeting, that if the levy does not pass, issue three does not pass in Bel Brook.
We will lose our SRO from Bel Brook City. So if that happens, I guess we would have a discussion with them as to transition period or, you know, I don't know, at least have it on the table. And, and also with respect to the township, we have an agreement signed two and a half years ago nearly, where there was supposed to be a second SRO, and it still hasn't happened. So I think it's time we have a more serious discussion with them about what's happening on that, so.
Obviously, Sugar Creek Elementary is, SROs and that building until that building's been switched to bed, should always be in topic.
Again, we can put it on for the next meeting also, and for something in between now and then too.
Yeah, I think definitely we need to talk about the potential property tax implications for all of us.
Okay. Good.
Now, just a reminder, that is OSBA day, so I will be sliding in right at five o'clock because the delegate meeting starts at two-thirty.
Ooh, yeah.
It's going to be close.
Yeah, and it's at the City of Bel Brook.
Yeah.
It's at what, it's seven?
It's at five P.M.
Five, okay.
It's at five on November seventeenth.
Okay, all right. Doesn't the city normally meet at seven? Is there a reason we're doing it at five? I mean...
I think the city or the township meets at...
Okay, so this is not in lieu of their meeting, it's, it's in addition to. Okay, all right. I know previously, we've kind of done it, how did we do it?
Is there a council meeting that night? Okay.
Yeah, so that's probably why it's at five.
I see. Okay.
I think we had the last one at five.
Yeah, it was right before township meeting.
Okay. You'll do it, Kevin.
I know.
Come in, thirty seconds.
I might have to call in.
Before I make a motion to move to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment and compensation of a public employee per RC one-two-one dot two-two-G-one, and for the purpose of considering the sale of property at competitive bidding or the sale of other disposition of unneeded obsolete or unfit-for-use property in accordance with section five-zero-five dot one-zero of the Revised Code for RC one-two-one dot two-two-G-two. Does my motion have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Pryor. We do not anticipate, will not take any action about anything, make any decisions after we're out, but of course, you're welcome to stick around if you want to while we go into executive session. If you need to take off, thanks so much for coming. We appreciate you. And call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Five yeses?
We are in executive session at eight twenty-four P.M.
Idea is not... there we go. Good? Yeah?
All right, we are out of executive session at 9:35 PM. I would like to make admission to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dor. Great, so please call me.
Dr. Prair?
Yeah.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Brice?
Yes.
Page SIS?
All right, we are adjourned.